December 3rd, the time is now 6 o'clock. And this is a regular meeting of the City Council for the City of Trinidad. Will you all please rise for the point of reference?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item 1 on the agenda is local call. DeBono?
Here.
Schu?
Here.
Thurman?
Here.
Trahell?
Here.
Ogultry?
Here.
Williamson?
Here.
Grigo?
Here.
Item number 2, approval of the agenda. Does anybody have any changes to the agenda?
No.
If not, I need a motion to approve the agenda stated.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Call the vote, please. DeBono?
Yes.
Schu?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes.
Trahell?
Yes.
Ogultry?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Grigo? Yes. Item 3, policy items and staff reports. There are none?
No.
Okay. Item 4, petitions or communications oral are written. I have to remind you that each communication, each presentation is only five minutes long. You will be warned when there is one minute left. We'll see where it goes from there. I know it's Thomas.
Somebody can read my handwriting.
Is that you?
Yes.
Thomas Murphy.
Yeah.
I can't read what the subject is.
Public comment.
Public comment.
Good evening, Mayor staff and Mayor, Council and staff. It's so tempting anymore, social media, to want to interject, but it's a never-ending slope. And I just want people to know, I've been filming government for 19 years. And I know, I'm, it's good that some people get involved and come up in comment. But I can tell you, I have the tapes from my first meetings. And there's never a time that the council, or school board, or county, or whatever responds. Because it would just create chaos. The meeting would never end and you'd never be able to, you know, finish the debate. So I'm just here, I was so tempted this last week when I saw some stuff of like, well, they should respond. And I'm, my position is, no, they shouldn't. It would never end. And then you get into a dialogue, it would be five hours long. So I'm just here to say, I appreciate the people that come and get involved and speak. I wish more people would do that. That's what we need in local government. And it got to the point where it seemed like somebody was implying, well, they did that before. And somebody had said that, that sat up here before and said that, and that's not true. And the proof is in my basement and the tapes that I have. If anybody wants to sit down and look at them. I'll go to different years. And you show me a time when people responded to public comment. It would, it would be bad policy. Tammy Tenaway, I remember her name so well. And I have the tape that she did and she spoke about. She spoke at length in this subject at one time. And I could go back and I could find that and cut it out. And it summarized pretty well why you don't do that. Less might be able, or might be able to give a better summation than what I'm doing, but it's like, don't ever go down that road. I know that you're not tempted, but I know sometimes social media hurts. Because, you know, they're attacking you. And I've been as big a critic as anybody in government. But I also will pat you on the back when you deserve it. And anyway, that's just my position is, people are wrong if they think that they should get up here and that you should respond to them. Just my opinion.
Thank you, Mr. Murphy. Item 5, council reports. Mr. DeBono?
I have any report down here?
Do we leave the sign up for the look at that?
Sorry, it's our first time here.
Okay, so this is the wrong place in the meeting to do that. But can we make an exception for? Did you want to speak?
Yeah, public comment.
Okay, you need to sign in. There's a sheet that you sign in to. So sign your name and then give it to me so I can tell everybody who you are. Well, hit close. Adrian Floyd?
Yes.
Okay, it's easier than Thomas Murphy. Ms. Floyd, what can we help you with?
Good evening. My kids are right back there. We first want to say thank you for showing up. Thank you for listening. And we look forward to becoming familiar and collaborating with you all in the near future. My name is Adrian Floyd. I am 31 years old, the mother of Naomi Floyd, who is, who is eight, and Noella Floyd, who is six, who's in a panda jacket. I'm a Florida native. Noella was born in Florida as well. And Naomi is a Georgia peach. We lived in Georgia, Florida, Texas, Arizona, and now Colorado. This is our first attendance, won't be the last, and we'll be learning as we go. One of our goals going into 2025 is to do our part as localists. We've been in the Trinidad area for about five months. We originally landed near the Western area, taking part in a work exchange at the Earth Mountain Education Farm, which is ran by a community member named Joni Stein, who also runs the State Street Community Garden with the help of dedicated local members. We moved to Trinidad as part of a co-op with friends in early October. As a family who has experienced on and off homelessness, when I say me and my family are officially Trinidadians, it's not said lightly. There is a statement being made. We can now truly call ourselves a neighbor, a community member. We know firsthand the importance and power of active community that is in place to tend to the vulnerable in their city. It is these excellent times to live in your own world and look out for you and yours. But we must remember that to call oneself a community member means one must do their part in their community. Being here tonight is one of the steps we're taking to fulfill that. With that said, I will end our time by addressing a recent concern that was brought to our attention yesterday during our walk to the library. Some of you may know the Soup Kitchen. I found out that they did not receive the funding that they needed for Thanksgiving. And it currently seems that they also don't have enough funding for Christmas. With this pattern of uncertainty, there is a possibility, the possibility of them having to shut down. So my two questions are, what can be done about this so that it doesn't become common for such organizations to shut down? And two, if it does shut down, how would the city address it for current community members who are experiencing the season of needing such help from their community? And for future members that are considering moving to Trinidad so that they can feel secure, knowing that if circumstances change, their city will do something about it? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Council reports. Aaron, Ogultry, do you want to start first?
Sure. Sorry to be remote from you all tonight. I just had one thing, which is that I had the privilege of being one of the judges for the Light Festival Lights Parade. And it was such a joy. Mr. Murphy did a great job being the emcee. And it was just a quintessential Trinidad experience. And I was very grateful to be a part.
Thank you, Aaron. You go.
Nothing from the Los Angeles County Veterans this week?
Whatever, you have a meeting first.
Nothing really, but I did attend the tree lighting and that was wonderful. I want to thank everybody for their hard work for doing that. That was great. Thanks to the Rotary Club for providing the beverages. And thanks to our lovely mayor for having one of our local children to flip the switch. Thank you guys so much. And thanks, thanks to the city for your wonderful work out there. I mean, it is just beautiful. And that's pretty much all I got until Friday.
What's Brad?
Friday, CML.
Okay. Oh, that's right.
Mayor, I have a small thing. I too was at the tree lighting. It's nice to see the community come together. I've had several occasions recently to see public meetings from other communities where they're dealing with, it's hard to describe. I mean, major, major differences of opinion. So I appreciate that we can all come together at this meeting. Have, while we have differences of opinion, I just want to remind everybody that our goal is the same. That we're, we're working towards a better Trinidad for everybody. While sometimes our views may be different as to how to get there. If we can look at the long-range plan together and remember that we're heading for a common goal, that's helpful. And that is in no way meant to be negative on input. The more input we have, the better. And I think that it's good that we're all here tonight and sharing this time. I'm grateful for it. I'm grateful for this ability that we can have. So I just wanted to share that.
Thank you. I, I too have to echo everybody else, everybody else's appreciation. The city did an excellent job. Everything downtown looks just very festive and I appreciate that. I didn't know if this should come under petitions and communications council reports. But just to jog your memory, last meeting we had a correspondence from Donna Leonetti regarding the state wanting to do monthly payments on the property taxes. So I, I suggested at that meeting and it was agreed upon that I contact CML because they have a young lady who is the lobbyist and she specializes in legislative and policy for this, for this CML. So I sent that to her and she wrote me back. And she said, I am aware of this discussion and am following. I will let you know how things develop. Well, yesterday I got an email from her. And this is really important. Mayor Grigo, the Commission on Property Taxes will be meeting on Thursday, December 5th, 2024, 1 o'clock. The agenda includes a discussion on authorizing counties to offer quarterly property tax payment schedules at the option of the county. So it's up to the county to decide. At this point, we don't know where it's going to go. The commission may vote to support this idea, but legislation would still need to be passed to allow it. You may view the agenda here, and I printed the agenda if anybody wants it. I'll make copies of it and give it to you before you all leave tonight. The agenda includes a link to the committee live audio. Please let me know if you have any questions. So if any, the link is here. I've got it on the, on this, the agenda. So I'm going to try and listen to it and see what goes on. But it seems like they're going to allow each county to make their own decisions regarding, regarding the payment schedule for property taxes. So I think our next step would probably be to see how our county commissioners feel about the payment schedule. We'll bring it up to them as well. I'm sure they're aware of it. Okay, thank you. Item 6, consent agenda approval. Item 6A, approval of the regular meeting minutes of November 19th, 2024. Item 6B, reappointment of Derek Thomas to the Historic Preservation Commission. Item 6C, approval of bills totaling $1,567,869 and $19,000. Item 6D, approval of payroll from the time of November 23rd through December 6th. I need to, a motion to approve this consent agenda?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Call the vote, please. DeBono?
Yes.
Schu?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes.
Trahell?
Yes.
Ogultry?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Grigo? Yes. Item 7A is a public hearing. A public hearing for consideration of ordinance granting local landmark designation to the property described as original townsite lot 66. Southern one half of Lot 3 being 34.75 feet on Walnut by 272 feet on Third Street by 34.7 feet on Chestnut in the City of Trinidad, Los Angeles County, Colorado. The hearing is open. We will take comments, both pro and con if there are any. There being none, public hearing is closed. Item 7A1, second reading of an ordinance granting local landmark designation to the property as described. It's 317 Chestnut, correct? Is that the street address? I believe it is, but all related. The original?
316 South Chestnut Street.
316. Okay, thanks, Mike. 316 South Chestnut. In the City of Trinidad, Los Angeles County, Colorado. I need a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Call the vote, please. Williamson?
Yes.
DeBono?
Yes.
Trahell?
Yes.
Yes.
Two errands. Ogultry?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes.
Grigo? Yes. Item 8, unfinished business, there is none. Item 9, miscellaneous business. Item 9A, resolution levy general property taxes based on the Part 2024 certification evaluation to help to free costs of government for the City of Trinidad, Colorado for the 2025 budget year. And I see Ms. Cheryl here, so.
Good evening, council. Tonight before you have a resolution to levy the general property taxes based on the 2024 certification that we received from the county assessor, I believe towards the end of November. And this is to defray the cost of the 2025 budget year. The county assessor's final valuation came out to a total of $80,275,702. And at the city's imposed mill levy of 17.579 mills, that equates to $1,411,167. This certification or approval of the mill levy certification has to be to the county assessor by December 50th. Any questions?
You're on the list.
I have no questions. That means really a matter of housekeeping and clerical word, correct?
That's correct. Naiman?
No questions. No questions.
Somebody was going to ask a question, do you need to?
I was waiting. I was stinking out with friends.
No questions.
Aaron Ogultry, do you have any questions?
No questions, Mayor, thank you.
Okay. I need a motion to accept the resolution?
So moved.
Second?
So moved.
Call the vote, please. DeBono?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes.
Ogultry?
Yes.
Schu?
Yes.
Trahell?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Grigo? Yes. Item 9B, first reading of an ordinance amending the City of Trinidad's annual budget for the fiscal year beginning on January 1st, 2024 and ending December 31st, 2024, and setting a hearing date for consideration of said ordinance on December 30th, 2024 at 3:00 PM. I need someone to introduce?
Please do so.
I need a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Okay. Okay, Ms. Cheryl.
Okay, tonight before you, you have an ordinance that will amend the 2024 budget by $3,125,445. This takes the original budget adoption amendment of ordinance number 3087 of $82,987,365 and increases it to $86,112,810. I will highlight some significant increases, which can be found on Exhibit 8. The first is a $356,000 transfer increase from the General Fund to the Seward. This is for the Eagle Rock Saddle Road project. These were committed funds. We're just taking those committed funds from General Fund and transferring them to Seward. The second is a $312,000 transfer from General Fund committed to the Capital Fund. And this is for the OSLA property purchase at the end of 2023, which we didn't get done in time for the budget. It's a transfer from General to Capital. Another is $1.6 million increase in the Gas Fund. And this is for the deferred gas write-off that we discussed a few meetings ago. And another is $357,000 for the Saddle Rock Project. This is to complete the project of the Saddle Rock Road. And that is a, the city went out to bid for this work and the bid was awarded to Western Civil. So we're increasing the Seward funds to cover these costs. Finally, the increase, or council is formally adopting or adding the Animal Shelter Department into the General Fund budget, which was not done at the end of the year last year because it just happened at the 11th hour. And we have added the Animal Shelter budget into, with this amendment, by five, of, excuse me. We've added the Animal Shelter Department into the General Fund budget in the amount of $500,000. And then, of course, offsetting, you'll see in Exhibit B, all the transfers are recognized as revenue on the other side. Are there any questions?
Williamson?
Thank you. I, I have several questions. I mean, we're not finalizing this till later in the month. So I think the appropriate thing to do, um, set of time, it might just be in the showroom because I think it's a lot of detail that probably would be better spent there. Thank you, Cheryl.
Naiman?
No questions.
No questions.
I've got one this time. Just, just to make clear on the animal shelter?
Yes.
That amount of money, is that going to cover for the year of 2025?
2024.
I mean, 2024. So. I was going to ask if that amount, do you think would cover for 2025 bargaining? Because I mean, we're just kind of looking at maybe the budget in the future.
So 2025, I believe we budgeted a little bit more. That's taking into account that we keep our staff full-time. What's happening now is we have a lot of turnover. So we have some vacancy savings in staff turnover. Should we keep them full-time? I believe the budget is around $600,000 for 2025. Do we've met a threshold there? We won't know. We need a couple of years to figure out a total.
Kind of curious. We have kind of planned to hit on.
Yeah, it wasn't for a full year.
It was, yes. They started January 1st.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you, Cheryl.
Aaron Ogultry, do you have any questions?
I had similar questions to Councilman Schu, but those, your answers were sufficient, so no other questions.
I just, I want to remind council that there was a time when council would have to read the whole ordinance into the record. And since I typed this whole ordinance, I think that Councilman Schu should read it.
I don't have my glasses on. It's punitive.
Thank you, Cheryl.
Mayor, if I may.
Yes.
Just real brief, if you notice, we have the, this ordinance reading on December 30th. That's Monday, it's going to be a special meeting. Reason being is to put things in the newspaper, you have to put them in ahead of time. And as the holiday of Thanksgiving, we won't be able to put it in until Friday. So that, working that in, we're down to the final hour on that. So December 30th will be a possible work session and special meeting.
It's 3:00.
At 3:00.
At 3:00, yes.
Mayor, I have a general comment if I may.
Sure.
I've had discussions recently with several constituents and they brought concerns to me that for cities of comparably larger size, the perception that these people had was that cities of larger size had a disproportionately smaller budget. Like, you know, cities say five times our population, their budget was not five times. And so I just wanted to mention, and I think we all know that, but I think it is worth mentioning, not every city operates a utility as, as part of their budget. We operate all of our utilities as part of our budget. So it's, it's when you're comparing apples to apples, you need to ensure you're comparing apples to apples. Just, I wanted to make that comment to the public.
And I also want to remind council that $27 million in the Capital Fund is for the Southwest Chief Project. We never have projects that significant. We do have to count for $27 million.
Thank you, Cheryl.
Pardon?
I need a motion? We did do a motion. We need to call the vote. Call for the vote. We just. Williamson?
Yes.
Ogultry?
Yes.
Trahell?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes.
Schu?
Yes.
DeBono?
Yes.
Grigo? That's okay. Item 9C, first reading of an ordinance granting local landmark designation to the property described as R. Chacone Lot 7, East 90 Feet by 100 Feet of Lots 1, 2, 3, and 4, City of Trinidad, Los Angeles County, Colorado, and setting a hearing date for consideration of said ordinance on January 7th, 2025 at 6:00 PM. I need someone to introduce?
I'll introduce him.
I need a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Okay. So this is the, well, it is the Hollywood Bar, correct? Anybody have any questions on that? No? Any additions from staff?
Mayor, I did have one question. I think it would be of less, and I don't, I don't know. It may not be of a lot of value to be answered to this question, but it is, I was curious. Once landmark status is granted, is, is there a mechanism to remove landmark status?
I don't, I've never.
Who comes first?
Oh yeah, here we go. No, I'd like to defer to Nick.
I'm surely curious.
My answer's likely being better because I quite don't know. No, usually going backwards is kind of, although we'll have to definitely look into it if they're going to go backwards.
I was curious.
That's a fair question. But yeah, it's the Hollywood Bar, Level 33, North Linden. Its exterior's changed paint-wise, but actually the physical features of the building remained the same for, oh, I think over closer to 100 years. So it's actually, yeah.
Stay there because I have a question.
Yes.
Okay. But we'll go through and let everything. Naiman, do you have?
No questions.
Questions?
Oh, I have history at the bar.
Do you have history at the bar? Aaron, do you have any questions?
I, no, but I'm glad that they're seeking landmark status. I think it's a very distinctive building that people note as they drive through Trinidad. And I'm glad that they're seeking this.
Okay, so Mr. Mason, explain to us, kind of just, not in a lot of detail, but what are the, are there any drawbacks to the city to have this destination for this property? And what does it benefit the property owner?
Um, there's not too many, there, there's no drawbacks on landmarking it. It's nice, we have to landmark as a city and as our Seward Preservation Commission, HPC, they have to landmark so many. they have to landmark so many a year. They've had a very successful year, they've landmarked quite a few. And the, the nice thing is, I think originally they were doing just city-owned properties, which the city kind of serves on itself. Last handful have actually been private owners, which is really what they've been looking to do. Because that means that people want their buildings landmarked, especially something like Hollywood Barbie. It is a prominent building in our, even though it's not on the main downtown corridor, it is a prominent building in our town.
Yes.
And then, if the property owner so chooses, they could go for tax credits because it is a historical building. So, sometimes it's a very reasonable, and that's a big reason why cities landmark a couple of buildings as well. It helps us kind of leverage that a little bit, so.
Is there any limitations to changes that somebody does to a building that would jeopardize landmarking?
Yeah, usually the physical structure of it. Like I said, they, they evaluated this one pretty thoroughly, and I, the historic, the HPC went through it very, very thoroughly because it is kind of, well, this thing's been changed colors quite a bit, but as far as its actual structure, it's remained pretty much the same for its entirety, which is, which is awesome to know because it is a very prominent building. Like I said, it has changed names and colors quite a bit.
All right, thank you so much. So, I need a multiple. Debono?
Yes.
Schu?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes.
Truhell?
Yes.
Ogletree?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Criego? Yes. Item 9D. First reading of an ordinance amending the zone classification of a parcel of land containing 11.5 acres located in a portion of the southeast 1/4 Section 7 Township 33, South Range 63 West 6 Principal Meridian of the City of Trinidad, County of Los Anamos, State of Colorado. It's, we know it as the Peak Drive-In Theater. City of Trinidad, Colorado, 81082, from open to industrial, and set a hearing date for consideration of said ordinance on December 17, 2024 at 6:00 p.m. I need someone to introduce the ordinance?
I'll introduce.
I would like a motion, please.
So, move.
On the second.
One second.
Okay, Mr. Mason, thank you.
Um, so, Mr. Ryan Ellerton of San Isabel Electric Association, he requests a major impact review for the purpose of rezoning previously described property known as the Peak Drive-In Theater, as everyone is familiar. It's currently open, they're going to rezone it to industrial, and intended uses is for a new member service center, a new truck barn. So, we initially had the concept review October 15th with, jointly with the city council and the planning commission. We then had planning commission meeting October 22nd. Planning commission unanimously, unanimously recommended approval to the rezone with two conditions. The first is the applicant will have to pull a building permit, and the second was the applicant will plaid a new utility easement on the east side of the property. And this was a request, request that was actually brought on during the public comment of the planning commission meeting. A lot of citizens adjacent to the property voiced that in the past, and it hasn't happened as, as much since the water, since the way they monitor meters has changed. But in the past, sometimes city employees used to go through their property to check their water meter because it's actually their water service in the back. For those houses that, along Main Street, that are adjacent to this property. So, the applicant replaid it, they replaid it a access easement for utilities, so that's no longer an issue. We can go through and check our water meters or service our water line as needed. That's on the east side of property. Some criteria for zoning, or the criteria for zoning is all met. The redevelopment of the site is encouraged as it's been vacant for past 25-plus years. Development is in an effort for San Isabel to better support their customers in the, in the area in terms of service and reliability. The surrounding zoning districts include industrial, open, and mobile home residential. The site layout is currently with the office adjacent to the urge off of Main Street, next to the, the city's power plant. And then, the truck barn's gonna be located in the middle of the 11 half-acre property. So, there shouldn't be too much disturbance to the surrounding neighborhood. And, yeah, truck storage, office space are both approved for industrial use. That's all I have. If there's any questions, if Mr. Ellerton, Mr. Ellerton's here as well, if there's anything I can answer.
Okay. Erin, do you, Erin Ogletree, do you have any questions?
Have any concerns been raised by local, sorry, adjoining property owners?
The only one that was, was the, in the past, city workers were using, were going through their properties to check their water meters. I don't think that's an issue because our water meters are now electronic, or I don't know how that quite works. But, so that hasn't been an issue. But we also, the applicant plaid a utility easement for the city workers to get through and service our water line as needed. So, that shouldn't be.
Okay, that's, that's encouraging. And I remember our discussion at the major review, and I'm comfortable with it.
Mr. Debono, do you have?
That was kind of my question about the people in the adjacent trailer park.
Uh, that was actually the, is mostly the residents along Main Street.
Along Main Street.
Yeah, because the property, you know, it has a Main Street front edge, but then it kind of angles behind, you know? So, there's that, it's kind of funky that angle it cuts along Main Street, but those properties, most of them, the mobile home, I don't think we had anyone.
No, it's okay. No questions.
Naaman, do you have any questions?
I don't have, everything was addressed when I gave the first presentation. No questions.
No questions, sir.
Mayor, no questions, just a couple of quick comments. It's encouraging to be able to go through all the process of this here, of subsequent meetings and public involvement, and addition of that public comment to the process. So, I mean, it shows, you know, stuff's happening as it should. And Mr. Ellerton, I wanted to thank you for San Isabel's investment in our community and doing, doing the right thing. It's, uh, it's really heartening to see you standing behind your shareholders in that way. So, we thank you for your investment in Trinidad.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
I also echo Mr. Williamson's comments. It's always nice to see something new come to town. I hope that in years to come, maybe they'll be able to increase the usage of that and increase the employees. That would be wonderful. So, thank you so much. Okay. I need, I hope. Roll call? Pardon? Did you say roll call? Yep, call the, oh. Sorry, I don't know you. You and I are having a really good. I know I have, I'm all, I'm not speaking for you. Debono?
Yes.
Schu?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes.
Truhell?
Yes.
Ogletree?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Criego? Yes, we can't even believe about a full name. Okay, item 9E. Consideration of a bid award for the water tank rehabilitation project number 12-2021. The expenditure required is $3,90,121, and I see Mr. Beagle's gonna give us the information on it.
Yeah, good evening, Mayor, Council. We have upper consideration award for the bid received from WPS Coating Incorporated to complete the project for the rehabilitation of the Allenville Water Tanks, south side tank, north side tank, and the replacement of the Monument Lake Tank. The total cost of the project was estimated to be $4,916,801. The scope was for the replacement of one tank, which was the Monument Lake Tank, and rehabilitation of the other three tanks, including coating the tank ceiling and walls and columns down 10 feet below the roof. The reason for that was when we had our tanks inspected, they noticed in the reports that where the water level of the tanks were, the tanks interior were still in good shape. It's just above the water level where the rusting was taking place. That's why that was that way. Coating of the exterior, each tank, well repaired as needed, spot coating repairs as needed, lead testing of coating inside the tanks prior to application of the new coatings, installation of new mixers. Our tanks are just bare aside with water. Now, we're gonna put some mixers in them to keep the water circulating and keep it fresh to maintain the corrosibles. VFDs, variable frequency devices, cathodic protection system to help prevent corrosion, replacement of the tank ladder to bring it up to code, install larger vents and signs in order to maintain the tanks. Bidders were to include as all that's bids for the full coating of the remaining interior surface of each of the three tanks being rebuilt. A change order will be required for lead abatement should be necessary. The cost is estimated between $60,000 and $100,000, which will be negotiated after the war. The Allenville tanks were built in 1993, which should not have had lead on the paint. North Side, South Side tanks were built in 1967, which may have lead on the paint. So, that's where the lead abatement or the lightning will have to take place. Two qualifying bids were received. The low base bid received was from WPS Coating Incorporated in the amount of $2,549,748. Their bid inclusive of the three bid alternates is in the total amount of $3,098,121. The second bid was received from Cobalco Services Incorporated with a base bid of $3,380,217 and $9 million, I'm sorry, $3,944,475 with all of three alternates included. It is a recommendation from Blackton Beach ME to accept Lobia from WPS Coating Incorporated in the total amount of $3,098,121, which includes the three alternates. The American Rescue Plan Act, the ARPA fund, must be committed prior to December 31st, 2024. The state revolving fund will be considered on December 6th, which is this coming Friday. The ARPA fund for grants is the one, the driver behind this. If we don't have this committed by the end of this year, we lose that $100,000. That's the reason we're trying to get this done quickly. The state revolving fund loan, we have an abort meeting this coming Friday on that. I've been told everything looks pretty promising moving forward with that, as of right now. But they are having a board meeting Friday, which we will be online with to see what's going on. So, our recommendation is to go ahead and move forward with the full amount to get the tanks into here. Since we're gonna have them drained, there's no sense not just doing above the water level. We're just to allow do the whole tank. Then they'll be done. If for some reason this, we do not get the state revolving fund loan, we'll still have the $100,000 ARPA grant and the dollar grant, which we can still continue to move forward with that money. When we put the tanks out to bid, we put them out to bid each tank individually. So, if we didn't have enough money, we can move forward and prioritize what we need to do. If we had, didn't have the money, if we got the money in full, then we will go ahead and move forward with all of them. So, that's what our recommendation, just go ahead and move forward with all of them, candy the state revolving fund loan, which we'll know more after this coming Friday. But as of right now, everything is looking promising from what I've been told.
Questions, Mr. Williamson?
Um, first off, thank you for all the work that was put into it. Also, I mean, it's, I think it was a really wise decision to involve Blackton Beach. That's, you know, this is, this is not something that's an easy undertaking, so it's, it's good to have that assistance. I, I was curious, and this may not be a question you're able to answer, but with the lead abatement, I mean, it's a, it's a fairly small amount compared to the overall project. Would that lead abatement be the same whether you went from one cotton tractor to another? Is that, is that known?
I couldn't answer that actively.
And then, the second question I had, and I, I suppose it's speculation, but is there any way to make an informed guess as to whether we have lead? I mean, if we had a lead issue, wouldn't, wouldn't that be showing up in our water tests? Because our water tests are pretty good.
I don't think so just because of the interior coating. There's a lot of variables. We have lead in our pipelines, we have leather joints. When you add lining to the water in the water treatment process, it's both provide an interior lining of the coating that prevents the lead from actually coming in contact with the water. So, would you get that corrosion buildup? It actually don't come in contact with the water. So, as time goes on, that's, that's likely to happen, so.
Anyway, I, I have no further questions. I think it's something we need to do, invest in our infrastructure, and thank you for taking the time to do it.
Yeah, and the good is, it was originally estimated to be around $5 million, and it's come in just 10 over $3 million. So, that's the good news for the citizens of Trinidad.
Naaman, do you have any questions?
He answered all my questions about the lead. I was gonna ask him about the lead. Let's say worst-case scenario, they did find traces of it.
We are mandated by the state to do lead and copper testing quarterly. We have yet to have any issues with lead in our water. Yeah, we're, our drinking water's been fine overall.
Delicious.
Yes, it is. I'll agree with that.
Yeah, let's, let's not talk about the lead.
Naaman, do you have any questions?
Uh, no, just a, just a comment. Thank you for putting all the research into this, and thank you for helping Blackton Beach to go through and give us such, I mean, all the information is there. They've done so much detail. I'm just hoping for that state revolving fund, you know, the sisters, we can get this done.
Right, let's give it enough out.
And thank you, thank you to you and your staff for going through and making sure that our water is one of the best waters.
I won't disagree.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mark, my only question would be, when you do these tanks, you're gonna do one separately at a time? Is that gonna cause a problem for water supply for the town?
No, it should not. That's why Blackton Beach, where Mr. Mail and doing the design on us, are prioritized monument of the tank first. When they drain it, they develop, have some more leaks. So, we prioritize, that's our priority. That has to get up and installed by the, what is it? Remodeling, it became first, we can't afford it. So, that prioritized first, and then we'll start getting the other three tanks one at a time. The south tank, the tank's gonna take a little bit more work. We can't run independently. That's where there's some extra piping's gonna have to be installed in order to keep everybody with a suspect through water. But that's all including the design that Blackton Beach has did that, took care of. So, we may experience a little bit of lower pressure than normal, but everybody should have water. So, that's my thing.
You have?
No, thank you, Mark, for everything, for everything you've seen this little bit.
Ms. Ogletree, do you have any question?
No, just Mr. Beagle, thank you for your professional handling of this. It's really encouraging to see this moving along and making sure our water system is safe.
So, no questions, just a comment. And I can't remember, what was that meeting we had here at city council several months ago? What did they, was that the public hearing?
That was a public, yeah, that's correct.
Okay, so for people that don't understand, I mean, it goes way beyond what you did to them and all this information. But I really encourage people to, when they, when they advertise a public hearing like that, for a project like that, like this, of this magnitude, I, I've been remiss because I haven't, because I've never noticed in the, in the paper. But the detail and the information you get at those public hearings is pretty amazing, and it's like, every, every I has been dotted, every T has been crossed 10 times over on this project, and I really, really appreciate it. It's a team effort. A member leaving Linda McHill was there that night, Audra and a couple of other staff members. And it was really, it's very instrumental to understand what these projects are like. So, I want to thank you. Thank you, Mark, for everything you do for us.
Thank you.
It's great, and I appreciate it. Tell Ms. Linda thank you as well.
I will do that.
All right. I need a motion to consider the bid.
Salute.
Second, Sergeant, call Burke, please. Debono?
Yes.
Shu?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes.
Truhel?
Yes.
Ogletree?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Criago. Yes. Item eleven, reports by city manager and city attorney. City manager, do you have anything to report?
I have several items, Mayor, Mayor Council, thank you. The select council know, I believe you know that the posting for city manager is out. It's been out for a couple of weeks. I'm told that there are already seven interested applicants, so that's available. Just wanted to let the public know that council is moving forward. And then at the previous meeting, I believe, Mr. Rosetti mentioned that we were out of compliance with our accessible spaces at Central Park. Met with him today, we were out of compliance, he was correct. I appreciate that. Would appreciate him coming and talking more with me on these issues, but, that said, they, there are five spaces. They are not in compliance because the signs, signs were taken down during construction. There, three of them are put back up, and they're pouring, concrete is poured, they're still finalizing the concrete around the bathroom facility where they're adding two more handicap accessible spaces. And then it was brought up that we have the Oslo property and hunting is allowed on public land. We checked with CPW, and they confirmed that although the property is public in a sense that it's owned by a public entity, it's not open to hunting just by virtue of that it's public land. This applies to state and federal properties as well, and as a city, we can determine what happens on the property and where, um, there, there are some who, this is from CPW, there are some who will argue that hunting is allowed on city property, and use the example, our property surrounding North Lake, but CPW actually leases those properties, and they lease that for hunting and allow it to manage it by CPW. And they look at it as private landowners, and we can manage our land as private landowners would. We would, could allow certain individuals to hunt on the property based on whatever criteria we set, or lease the hunting rights to an outfitter guy and allow them to manage the hunting on the property or not allow hunting at all. We have posted the property currently with no hunting signs, just to ensure that until we decide if that's what we want to do, we'll have a process defined and moving forward on that. With that, that's all I have, Mayor, unless there's other questions.
Yes, any questions? Thank you, Mike, I appreciate that. Mr. Downst, do you have any?
Just a couple of items, Mayor, Council, thank you. The first one is I want to make sure that you all received a copy of the legal action I recently filed regarding five oh eight University, in the hopes that we can get legal, a legal declaration of that being a nuisance property before the city goes and abates the nuisance. It's a very dilapidated rundown. Yes, sir?
I noticed that Council and Ogletree is having a hard.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I have my back to you. Is that better? Okay, so I was just wanting to make sure, to kind of repeat that all of you received a copy of the legal action that I issued, and had to file the district court asking if that property be declared a nuisance property. That's something that we have not done historically, or we're hoping to have that added layer of insulation to have a judicial nuisance declaration before abating the property. So that is number one, and if you have any questions on anything, if I could just mention this, and you'd ask me any questions you, you may have. The other thing is, I sent to you today a copy of a legislative outline that I found. It, it came up, and I sent this by way of email. But the issue recently arose as to whether people are allowed to carry handguns in city hall. And, and, you know, a sidearm or what have you, excuse me, and the answer is no. Aside from law enforcement, I see the detective department has gone now, it is a class one misdemeanor to carry a, a gun on city property, and the properties that are set forth are, it's a class one misdemeanor to carry a gun in all state legislative buildings, including buildings at which the offices of elected members are located, or a building of local government's governing body, including buildings at which the offices of elected members or the chief executive officer of a local government are located, perim local government buildings, and a courthouse or other building used for court purposes. This was a legislative, um, this was legislation that was signed by the governor. It was Senate Bill twenty-four one thirty-one. You, if you go to that, or you open the link that I sent you, you can also click on it and see the, the text of the legislation that was adopted. It does allow, excuse me, people that have a concealed handgun in an adjacent parking area to these places. It also allows a local government to enact a law permitting carrying at a local government building included in the act. So it does seem as if a local governmental body could opt out, is my initial reading of that. But without opting out, it is simply a class one misdemeanor to have a firearm if you're not law enforcement. I just want to say all that to you, and say that to all of you.
Aaron has a question.
Yes, ma'am, I hope you heard that.
Yes, I did. Actually, from that applies to both open and curie and concealed.
Yes, ma'am.
License holders.
That's correct, even if you have a concealed weapons permit, you cannot do that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's it?
Yes, that's everything.
Okay, thank you much.
Thank you.
Item twelve, executive session. Item twelve A for a conference with the city attorney for the purpose of receiving legal advice on specifically legal questions under CRS twenty-four dash six, four oh two four B, boards and commissions, and item number two under the executive session is for the purpose of determining positions relative to matters that may be subject to negotiations, developing strategy for negotiations, and or instructing negotiators under CRS section twenty-four dash six, four oh two four E, union negotiations. I need a motion to go into executive session.
Salute.
Second. Call the vote, please. Debono?
Yes.
Shu?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes.
Truhel?
Yes.
Ogletree?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Criago. Yes. Would you all like a break, or do you want to just, do you want a break?